All right, well, I called to order this workshop of Planning and Zoning Commission on July 18th, 2024 at 5:06 PM. Members present are Aho Corsey, Katie Frattoni, Ross Wuch, Al Frattoni, and Adam Open, and we might see Nick later. So I think, so our purpose of this meeting today is to spend a little time on these regulations. And perhaps it'd be best to start off with a presentation from our consultants. And that'll help us get going. We, we have, perhaps have a little less of a pressure because if we're going to December 31st, we don't have to finish everything today, but it's good to get started on this process. And so, give us the word.
I don't know if we can give you the word. We will give you-
Give us some words.
Words or something I've never been short on. So, we can start with a presentation. We'd worked with staff and we'd originally kind of tagged that as being how we wanted to kick this off. But the presentation that we would have started with would is the PowerPoint that I think you've seen at least twice now. That Jennifer, yeah. So, so it's been cut down maybe in half or so. But I think that when, when I think of a workshop, I think of people talking openly and on top of each other to some degree about where we are. And so, a 20-minute slideshow that you've already seen of us that we're going to give you feels a little bit deflating for me. But if you want to see it, we can show it to you. It's, we do have some other stuff that we've kind of put together that we want to talk about and show you. So-
Why don't you assume that we have all seen the slideshow?
I know you have because I was here and we all saw it together.
I hope you all appreciated my slideshow though.
But, I mean, for legitimately, it's been provided, it's part of the recording, it is part of the record.
And you can watch it many, many times over.
Right.
Yeah.
So why don't we move on to the section of "other"?
Okay. So, there's, yeah. Basically, we're going to go through some, just some points that we want to make to kind of frame how we think about all of this. And then some, some notes that respond to questions, comments, things that we've brought up, you've brought up, just so that we can be as focused as we can on closing the loop on as many things as we, that, as we've heard so far. And from there, there's a couple of things that we want to show you. And I think after that, we can talk about where we want to go. Is there any place that we need to go? Hopefully, where we want to go is not home. And we can, we can talk about changes, revisions, et cetera. So, I think the first point we want to make is that this is, this whole regulation and process was, was born from the, a discussion that began in the fall. Right? We talked about what the commission has heard from members of the public, what you have learned from applications previously approved, what you were looking for more of when it comes to housing, what you were looking for less of, and the things that you were and weren't comfortable with, with the projects and process that kind of has occurred to date. We then had a stakeholder workshop with boards and commissions elected appointed officials. We had over 60 people attend that and solicited additional feedback about sort of where things are and where folks wanted to go and what they wanted to see and what they thought. And, and there's a summary that we provided to you after that, which kind of goes over all of the feedback that was provided from everybody there. And we, we created the, the regulation and the components of the regulation based upon that feedback. So, your current process is a special permit process. And for several reasons, the special permit process didn't provide for the flexibility and the control that you guys were looking for based upon what you've seen. So, we've heard some feedback. I'm going to screw you up because I'm not following bullets. I'm just riffing it, which is terrible. But one of the things that, that, when I'm sitting here and I'm listening to public comment, I'm paying attention because it's important to get all those perspectives. Because I'm looking at this because we've been living and breathing it for the last several months. And someone coming from the outside has a totally different set of experiences and so they're looking at it from a different way. So, the first thing that I'm doing is taking notes on everything they're saying and trying to understand. So, one of the things that we've tried to do is make sure this reg is down the middle. So, we're not trying to make this, and it isn't, a pro affordable housing reg, nor is it a pro student housing reg. It's not a pro apartments reg. This is a regulation to deal with any type of housing that comes before you that exceeds six units. The reason it's written this way is so that you guys can put your thumb on the scale to some degree and say, well, we've got enough high-density apartment-style development. We want to see something else. We want to see something mixed. We want to see things that are smaller because they'll be cheaper and easier to, for people to afford. We want to see entry-level housing for young families. So, this regulation doesn't encourage or discourage anything. It provides a, a pathway for you to make the projects that come before you as appropriate as, and reflective of the wants and needs of the community as you can, whenever they happen. So, I want to be clear that, that there's no, there's no baked-in goal with this. We're not trying to, to turn out another 1,200 units of high-density housing exactly as we've seen or make it all affordable. It's a, it should be down the middle. The purpose of the several steps is again to let this sort of be a process that grows and so that it, and to set it up in such a way that it grows in front of the residents. A special permit, you find out about when it's submitted. You submit an application, it comes for receipt, you schedule a public hearing two weeks later, and boom, now there's a public hearing, but that's it. When the residents are made aware of an application for special permit, it is when a public hearing is happening the project is designed. This step-by-step allows for the, them to sort of be at least in the room when the discussions occur with the commission from, from the early stage, from that conceptual development review. So, when you're having that informal discussion and talking about that plan, which they don't need to be held to because it's informal, they're going to hear that conversation, they're going to know about it, and they're going to be as read up as you are from the beginning. So, the, the comments about transparency and wanting public feedback, this process provides for increased transparency, double the amount of time that the project is going to come before the commission. It does not remove the public hearing requirement, nor does it reduce any performance standards that you have in your regulations on the site plan step, which is that, that last phase. So, there, there's no reduction in that process. Looking through. The other, the last point that I want to make, and then I'm going to turn it over to someone who can speak more concisely than I can, is that the other reason and rationale behind this special development district process, which has been established and is supported in the courts, you can do it, it's not taboo. And it's one that provides for something that I think we've heard a lot about, which is that every time you approve a project, you've learned. And we've heard from members of the public to say, well, wait a minute. Let's see what we've learned, let's see how this goes before we do anything further. This process allows you to take what you learn minute by minute, month by month, year by year, and incorporate that into your review. So, if these projects that are, that are under construction now come online and you learn, we don't like the graduated approach, we don't, we don't like the, the three up front and taller as they go back. We, we don't think it looks good. Then you include that in your next request when you review another project. You don't then need to go through an entire regulation or design review process. So, you can be as nimble as you want to be as you learn from these projects as this goes forward because we're not requiring this to be a one-size-fits-all approach. I think the last thing that I will say is, and we're going to get into greater detail here, but again, we're, we're speaking on all housing. We're not talking about the hub or the standard. I, I feel like we can't restate that enough. We really want to be in a position to say, we don't want five stories at X density with apartments that have no outside access and no outdoor amenities. We want duplex, triplex, we want cottage clusters or, or another type of housing. And that is why this regulation was written the way that it was. There is no intent, nor has the discussion ever incorporated a desire to cite projects of any higher density or, or like what we're seeing, you know, in four corners in, in sort of the rural reaches of town. We're not proposing to pick up a bunch of projects and scatter them and see where they land. This is meant to facilitate the type of housing that everybody is asking for. I'm going to take a breath now.
And just to add, so this is more background information, just as reminders of sort of how we got there. Huh?
We need-
Oh, sorry about that.
Just, just this week, so it's much better-
For me. Dialed it down.
Sorry about that. And so, just to backtrack, this is all just sort of background information so that the public, because we heard a lot of public say, you know, sort of, how did you get here? Or maybe we didn't consider this, or maybe we didn't consider that. So, it's super important for them to understand how we did get here. And I know the commission knows how we got here because you guys have been involved in that process. But to just sort of formally put it on the record. And I think a really important piece of this is as this regulation is written, nothing is allowed because it's a multi-step process with the biggest piece of it being the zone change. And you guys have the utmost discretion with zone change. So, until you approve a zone change, none of it is allowed. And that was the reason why we chose this approach because that was the feedback that we got from you guys. I think we can go down into more specific responses to some of the questions and concerns and feedback that were provided over the last two public hearings. Mike already sort of hit on, you know, this regulation wasn't just written by us without feedback by you guys, by other boards and commissions. We did have that January workshop. It was attended by many, many people. And so, after that workshop, this was what we thought provided the most flexibility based upon those discussions. It was clear that you were looking for housing diversity. And so, yes, there are apartments that are put in here, but they're very specific to a very specific zoning district. You're not going to see an apartment in RAR 90. That's not how this regulation is written. So, there are standards as to what can go where. There's unit types as to what zoning districts they can go in. And that was done by design with you guys. You know, the flexibility obviously was really, really important. So, we didn't focus or promote one type of housing. So, as Mike said, this isn't student housing. This isn't affordable housing and this isn't meant to promote apartments. It's to, meant to promote all types of housing developments. It's to facilitate that housing diversity and allow flexibility in the design because what might work in one corner of Mansfield is not appropriate in another area of Mansfield. And I think we all recognized that when we were going through this process. It does take into consideration, obviously, appropriate development types. You know, for example, PVRA, one thing that we worked shop through with you guys is we wanted that cottage cluster feel, single families sort of spread out, maybe with some duplexes. So, those are the only two housing types that are allowed in that zoning district. So, again, it was very specific. It was written and designed purposely that way. As Mike said, special design districts are a tool, they're authorized by the statutes, they're used in other municipalities. When they're used appropriately, they work really well. I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, the comfortableness of this commission and your staff using this as a tool. I think you guys are very capable. All the feedback we got in January, you guys know what you like and what you don't like. You've learned from the developments that have come through. So, I think that this is a tool that will work really well for you guys. You use a special permit process now. Obviously, the feedback was that it's a one-size-fits-all regulation. You're very prescriptive as to design considerations for, you know, what's been built. So, similar looks, similar feels, you know, not a lot of flexibility. This will give you all of the flexibility that you guys are looking for, which is why those standards, you know, don't say, we want red and blue for your, your color type or, you know, we want hardy wood plank or something like that. Like, it's, it's meant to be sort of fluid and specific so that you can look at the area of town, you can look at the surrounding neighborhood, you can say what's appropriate. And it gives you guys that ability to do that. I'm hitting on all of my stuff without even reading it. So, you know, there was some comments about environmental considerations. So, one of the biggest things, and you guys have this in your reg now, it was pulled over into this, is that we do take out wetlands and watercourses, steep slopes, they come out of the developable area. So, just because a lot is five acres does not mean it's going to qualify under this regulation. They're going to have to take out all of those items to get to the developable area to be five acres in order for that to even be considered. In addition to, they're still going to have to go through those regulatory processes. So, they're still going to have to go to inland wetlands, they're still going to have to get to their approvals. And it also goes back to your other environmental factors that you guys have as standards in your regulations. So, it's not just subject to what was written in the PHDD. We do refer back to other sections of the regs. So, we refer back for environmental stuff, we refer back for architectural and design, we refer back to, you know, I think bicycle, storage. There, there is a bunch of references in there. So, we're connecting your current regs with this regulation to make sure that those things are not getting missed as we go through. There were some comments about sidewalk and bike plans. Obviously, we didn't write your sidewalk and bike plan. That is something that was adopted by the town. Our regulation does take into consideration those connections. It does not, however, mandate those connections or mandate new sidewalks or bicycle pathways. It says if they're existing, that the developer should make efforts to make connections to them. So, there was consideration made to that. But again, it's not something that's, you know, if you're out and someone's looking at a parcel and there are no sidewalks and there are no bike paths, this doesn't tell them they have to do that. So, it just takes into consideration your plan that you've already adopted, I believe, earlier this year, and if it's already in place and around a parcel.
I do believe in the regulations, there's a section that says that you're, if you're in a design development district, you are required to put a sidewalk along that frontage. But that requirement can be waived by three-fourths of the commission. So, I'd have to pull up that reference, but I believe that is in there. So, again, you have waived that, that ability to have a sidewalk installed. But in the past, the commission has always felt it important to have a sidewalk just in case, you know, there were to be a connection in the future. But looking at that by master plan is going to be important.
Some of the other comments was about village districts or form-based codes. We did talk about those and why they may work in some areas and may not work in others. They are far more prescriptive and specific than obviously what is proposed in the PHDD. They can provide for greater control of design. However, village districts, when you create them, and I do have something I will share with staff and they can share with you, which is the statute. They, they have to be created within a specific area of town and they have to have a connection to something significant, either, usually it's historic, could be architectural significance of a timeframe. It can't just be, we're going to create a village district because we want to create a village district to have more control over housing. And so, I also think that that's something that one of your other consultants looked at and has also spoken to. Form-based codes also can work really great, but they're also very specific and they do not leave room for any flexibility. So, again, when we talked through this with you guys, we ended up with this design development district because it provided the most flexibility and sort of met the needs that you guys were looking for. And obviously, you guys know this is a multi-step process. So, we have the pre-application process, they're going to come in, they're going to talk to staff, staff is going to give them feedback. They're going to come in with a conceptual plan to the commission where it's not binding on you, it's not binding on them, to get feedback. One thing that I thought we could work into that, which will, can get some feedback from you guys today, is I know that you guys have a design review board and I'm not sure how it works here. If, if they, if an application typically goes to them first before it comes to you?
During the public hearing process, it gets referred out to them. So, and one of the things that your design review panel has said is that we wish that we could get this before, before this, before the application is basically fully baked. Because these are, this is a panel of design professionals. You've got two architects, a landscape, actually, three architects and a landscape architect on that panel. And for me, their comments have been extremely helpful in reviewing the, the large applications that, you know, you processed this fall.
So, I think one thing we could do is, is put a referral between the conceptual plan and the master plan application to the design review board so that when an applicant is actually going to apply for, because before the master plan zone change, they're not an applicant, right? They're just informally coming in and discussing, discussing with you. So, I think once they submit that conceptual plan for your informal feedback, I think it is appropriate to then include your design review board as part of that and we can make that part of the process. And it also helps the developer, right? Because they're going to be giving those upfront, outside of the public hearing process, can make those changes or amendments before they come in with their official application. And it sort of just, I think, lends itself to a smoother application process, number one, but also gives the developer some really good feedback that they need versus submitting their application. You're in the public hearing, they, they get referred out and then they come back and they're making changes in the middle of that public hearing.
This is just a little aside. One of the things that I found with that design review panel is when I would have a meeting with the design review panel and the, and the applicant team. And I think that the, the architects and the landscape architects really appreciated that because they're working, they're hired by the client and the client is telling them to like, get this done, get this done, get this done. And they, I think it gave them more, you know, ammunition maybe just to go back to their client and say, see, this is what the town wants. So, I think it's a great idea.
So, so that was one of the things that, as we listened to the feedback that I thought might be appropriate to sort of add into that process. And they actually gave us some really good feedback and comments on the regulation, which Mike and I will take a look at and make some changes to, which we'll present to you guys before your next meeting so that you have those. There, there, some of it has to do with what the public was talking about, like the shoulds or, you know, shalls and that kind of stuff. And, and so, we're going to, we haven't, we just got them, so we haven't looked through all of them. But I, I've looked through some and I think that they're really good recommendations and we'll go through and make those tweets for that next meeting. And so, they would come in with the master plan, they would come in with the zone change. And I think the importance of that is, and I know that you guys know this, but that zone change gives you the utmost control over whether or not a development is going to happen wherever it's proposed. You could simply say, the sky is purple and we don't like it, so we're not approving the zone change. And obviously, I'm being a little facetious, right? But the point being, you don't actually have to have a real reason to not approve a zone change. You can just say you don't think it's appropriate and that's it. And that's sufficient enough. For a special permit, you cannot do that. A special permit is a use that is approved in your regulations and provided they meet those special considerations that you guys have spelled out. You, you can condition a permit, but you can't just outright deny it. So, again, this was, this regulation was very specifically written this way by design to give you control, to give you flexibility. And, and that is the reason why it's built in with this zone change master plan. And so, again, you could, you could stifle development if you wanted to, right? From a housing perspective, I don't think that's what you guys would do. But I think it lends yourself to getting the type of development you want to get, which is what we kept hearing. And then the last piece is, if you were to approve the master plan and the zone change, they still have to come back with a site plan. And the site plan, just, it's administrative, it, it has to check all the boxes, meaning it has to meet what they showed you in the master plan, but it's that one more box to check to make sure they're doing what they say they were going to do. And so, I think that that's important. I think I already said, you know, we not only are there the design considerations that have been built into the PHDD, and yes, they're very flexible. However, they do refer back to multiple sections of your regulations. So, including your architectural and design standards. And that's really what I have for my notes. So, I think I'm going to throw it back to Mike because he has a few things on the GIS that we did just to sort of give you guys some visuals, which I think will be helpful.
I, I have one other, the PA 24143 that we talked about because that was raised during the public hearing. That was, if you, if, and-
I'm going to, I can pull it up so I can sort of read it for them if you would like.
Yeah, excellent. Because it's, that is really about enacting an, a for, a moratorium on 830G. So, it means that if you enact a certain type of zoning regulation as of right, middle housing, then you would get additional points. They're called housing unit, housing equivalent units or housing unit equivalents. And we're on our way to being eligible for an 830G because you have done so much affordable housing. That's really a policy decision as to whether or not, I mean, do you want that moratorium from 830G or not? That's, that will be up to you when we get there.
Maybe you can explain to us how that as a right works.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I think, if I could shortcut that, I mean, really, what we're talking about here, both in the type of housing and the process, is, is not significantly related to what that act talks about. Because the, the special development district is not as of right. But the doc, the, the document or the regulation that we're considering sort of next, right? The six and under.
Right.
I mean, we have approached that as an as of right. So I think if we want to talk about that, we want to dig into what that says and how it could work, we should probably set it aside and talk about it then.
All right. And if we do it for the under six, we still get credit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's put that discussion off till we get to the under six, the under six-year-olds.
Does that make sense to you? Because that's what we're already sort of structuring that to be, if it meets these criteria, it's as of right.
Yeah. So the under six reg that we're working on for you guys, which will come after this.
Right.
The criteria, the middle housing criteria they use in the statute, that will apply too. So that would go, and, and again, just stressing that this regulation we're talking about now is not about affordable housing. That is not what this reg is for. I know there was a lot of commentary on affordable housing and it definitely has its place, but it's not this regulation.
Just to jump in, because we, there were just a bunch of statute numbers that were thrown around and there are some new members on the commission. Does everyone know what 830G is and what it says? This is a great time to do some quick explanations on that. So you, you're, you're the experts, but I can also spiel, because I love to have many words, just like Mike does.
Are you saying we're spieling?
No, certainly not. I mean, no more than you normally.
Is anyone unfamiliar with, with 830G and affordable housing?
Why don't you explain it? Just so we're sure.
Eight dash thirty G is a section of the statutes which basically allows for a developer to come in and propose deed-restricted affordable units in a manner which makes them effectively exempt from several pieces of criteria, including zoning, period. They meet public health, safety requirements, you know, fire code, building code, water, sewer, all of those things. But they don't need to meet coverage standards, height standards, setbacks, densities, anything. And the appeal process, it, they don't come in and say, we're, they don't come in and drop a proposal on the table and say, you will see in six months for our building permit and walk out. They still go through a review process, but upon a denial, if the town were to deny, the, the burden is flipped and the town has to demonstrate to the court why it doesn't meet the criteria in the statute, rather than the alternative when the traditional approval process happens. This was enacted by the legislature almost 50 years ago now. Because back in the seventies, they realized that communities were coming exclusionary and housing was not being built in a manner that was affordable. And they didn't, they, so there was this, I think they called it a blue ribbon commission and a whole endeavor to figure out what to do. And they basically said, this is the pressure relief valve that we're going to establish so that we can be sure that someone who wants to live in a community can. And it's been on the books since then. So it's a really simplified version.
And just one important note is that you own, if, if you could come under 830G with just 30% of your units being affordable. So 15% have to be at 80, 80% area median income and 15% have to be at 60%. So that means that 70% of the units coming in under 830G would most likely be market rate. So just, so that's just an important, it's not all affordable housing, it's just a percentage.
The other thing that's interesting about that is even though we are supposed to have 10% affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing doesn't count. And I think there are, there are some people that would like to change that in the future, too.
Yeah, yeah. And there's no way to know exactly how many you have that are naturally occurring. But yes, it is something that probably exists in, to a greater extent than we may all think. There's one point that I, I want to make and then I want to show you these maps. The, the, there were, there were some feedback during the public hearing related to the last step being a site plan. Site plan is an administrative decision by the commission. If they meet the criteria, you have to tell them yes. And if they don't, you deny it. If you don't act on it within 65 days, it's automatically approved. The difference between site plan and special permit is site plan doesn't include a special, a, a public hearing. And you can't attach all kinds of special conditions to the application or to the, to the project. The reason why the last step is a site plan is because the regs require that the site plan be prepared in compliance with the master plan. So they can't say, here's our master plan, and they come in with a site plan that's different. The master plan involves a public hearing. So the public hearing process will allow everybody to look at all of those things and see the project. They'll be able to participate and then the developer will come back with a final designed site plan that will be compliant with the master plan. So the, there should be no new or different information on the site plan that was not part of the public hearing process for the master plan, which is why there's no public hearing at the second step. If there is something that's different and they're not in compliance, then they go back one step and they have to get a revised master plan approved, which includes a public hearing. So we're not cutting out a public hearing, but there's no new information that was not already part of a public hearing presented at that step. So I'm going to share my screen. I am not a GIS expert. If, if, as we knew, I had an ArcGIS license, they'd probably take it away from me because I'm not good at it. But I was trying to figure out a way to, you know, a picture worth a thousand words, put together some of the stuff that we had heard and save you from an additional thousand words of me talking. So what I put together was kind of two quick maps, with emphasis on quick. Is it going to let me share? Hold on, I'm going to click. Yep, it did. Okay. So I'm going to explain these because, again, they're, they're really just more to provide a, a way to think about it. It's, this is not like any final analysis. So the map on the left is what I'm calling eligibility. So we know that the regulation as currently put together has four sort of location criteria. We have the S E R H O, the, the PB zones, the PVRA, and then other. Those are the four categories, right? So the tan that you see is all of the other. It's all of the, the everything else. Okay? So, so right off the bat, everything that's tan, you cannot, no matter, no matter if you have the most perfectly put together parcel with, it's flat, it's got no wetlands, it's got no nothing, it's on a perfect road, it's got great sightlines, septic, soils are great or you're on sewer. You cannot have apartments in any place that is tan, period. The regulation doesn't allow for it. So buildings with six or more units cannot be anywhere shown in that tan.
Could you just review the definition of a multiplex? Because I feel like I didn't do a good job with, with that in my presentation.
So, so yeah, so what I'm saying right now is apartments cannot be in the, in that tan area, which is a building with six or more units. So you can have in those areas a multiplex and that is a building with six units or less, so three to six units. So you could have four buildings with four units each, but you could not have six plus in one building.
If, if I might, just to jump in, a really good example of something that you saw recently on an application that you approved was at the golf course property. They talked about those mansion-style complexes, which were designed to look like large colonials. Those have six units in them each. So those were designed to be multiplex style. It might have been eight units or?
I think they might have had more than six, but yeah.
But there, that is the style of what a multiplex would be.
Right. So any of the projects that we're thinking about when we talk about higher density housing, like the ones that you've approved, none of them could be sighted anywhere that's tan, period. No, no nothing we can do about that with the way the regulation is written. So you could have the multiplex. You could have the multiplex only if you had at least five acres and we reduced the density from, to eight units per developable acre. So no wetlands, no steep slopes, no restriction, conservation restrictions. It also needs to be on an arterial or collector road and it needs to be in an area defined or, or tagged on your future land use map as compact residential, right? So, so if I want to have four buildings of four units each, I need to have, in the tan area, I need to have at least five acres of size, developable. I need to have, I need to be under the max density of eight units per developable acre. I need to be on an arterial collector road and I need to be in an area designated as compact residential. All four of those things need to happen, otherwise.
Why don't we pause right at that point and discuss this a little bit? Because there is a confusion. I think when we say other, people think, oh, you know, it's everything and everywhere and they start coming up with 200 places where it could go. So one of the things that we might want to do in another workshop would be to go through all of the zoning, play, every zoning that we have and clarify where these multiplexes might go. For example, we may decide that an RER 90 that's not in the that's not in, not in a compact, well, that in an RER 90, we're not going to allow even duplexes. So I think, one thing that makes people nervous when they see the other is they don't know what we're talking about. So I think it might be valuable for us to list every single zone.
Sure.
And, and then say, okay, you can't do this and that and the other, and you can do this. To, because I think it's confusing when, I was confused between apartments and multiplexes and, and what could go and duplexes.
And so I think that, you know, one of the things we heard a lot about was, I think I'm going to get the name right. Is it Freedom Green? People generally like that. They like the way it's laid out. They think it's appropriate and, and it's a, it's a, a good development in, in the town. And so the reason we created the other category is because we've stepped down or increased the standards, right? We've reduced the densities, we've taken away the types of housing you can construct and we require that it also be located on the future land use map. So we created that other catch-all to provide for some of that, right? Because you can still do the single-family detached or the duplex. Because if you want to have that cottage cluster, those small, kind of tiny house type of neighborhoods and things that we've reviewed, those, all those graphics we showed you, those are, no one's going to put that type of development in at four corners. That's not, that's not where you want it and that's not where they're going to want to put it. So if you want those other types of housing projects, you're going to need to put them in different areas of town and they're, they're going to need to be in places that are more suitable for having some of those other things like a amenity or community space or whatever. And so we had to create the other category so we could increase this, the requirements.
Yeah. I think it just, it may make it clear if we go through
Yeah, agreed.
Each zone.
Yep.
And, and we may, we may change our mind about what we want in each of those zones if we, if we're able to look at the maps and think about each different zone. For example, we may want to have a discussion about neighborhood business. What's the NB?
Favorite business.
Neighborhood business.
One, one other really important thing that I don't think has come up at all in any of the public hearings about this is where the compact residential part of the future land use map actually is.
Right.
Not in very many places. It's in chapter eight of our P O C D.
It's us one, yes. You want to try?
I, I got it up. I can just show you.
If Mike brings that up. This map's incredibly uncompressed, so it's going to take a second to pop up.
Yeah.
But
Well, I can give it a minute to load and I can just show you.
Good. There we go.
Okay.
You have to turn zoning off, otherwise it gets really.
Uh, zoning is off.
It is? Okay.
Oh, no. Hold on. You're right.
So compact residential is this dark reddish brown. And
It's a minute.
It'll get there. You just got to believe in it.
We gotta see if we can reduce the
It's like Rudy. You put him in and he'll get there, you know, like.
Maybe you need some AI.
Yeah.
Trying to see if the extent of the map is.
No, that's not causing the problem. It's just, it's just slow.
Well, I
Let me, yeah, let me go back to this other stuff and we'll give it a minute if, just so we're not sitting here waiting. So the, the categories that we were talking about, we have the, the next step and I lost my, uh, I lost my, uh, here we go. So the other category, or the, the second category of the four is, is PVRA. And the zoning data that we had wasn't fully up to, I think, updated. So I tried to quickly go back and forth, so if it's not complete. But in the PVRA, you've minimum district size, again, of five acres. You can only have a single-family detached or a duplex, period. So ones and twos, that's it. Eight units per developable acre maximum density, again, arterial and collector road. So that is the area in the bottom shown in red. That's it. So in that area, single-family detached or duplex. The third category are the PB zones. So all of the PB zones in our, are, have been combined. I have them here in orange. So in these areas, the top and the bottom, there is no minimum district size and there is no housing type restriction. You're capped at 15 units per developable acre, which again is a density that you currently maintain in your regs. So we're not increasing that, but also need to be arterial or collector.
Uh, let's stop right there. And how do people on the commission feel about changing the density on PB1? You know, where the, where the mall is now? You know, it's, it's conceivable that in the future, we might have a, a proposal that would, you know, right now, we're thinking about 15 units, but that might be a place where we could put 100 units.
Well, right now, in the current regulations, PB1 is at 15 units an acre and you allow for density bonuses of eight.
Uh huh. But it's possible that PB1 especially could be a place with 100 or 200. You know, if someone were to buy that mall and build something. I think we should leave ourselves open to that possibility.
So what do you want the density to be there?
If you're going arbitrarily high at 100 or 200, you could just remove the maximum.
Remove the maximum, right.
Developable units per acre if you want specific redevelopment on the mall. But you could also turn to your consultant and say, if you want specific redevelopment on the mall, how do we leave the door open for that to work for a developer?
We have, we have considered redevelopment as part of this. And one of the things that we added into the current draft is language in the calculation for developable acreage to remove area on the lot, either approved or currently approved for development or currently developed. Because otherwise, what you're going to have is people basically double-counting their developable acreage and coming in and, and maxing a lot out with a commercial development and then coming back in and saying, well, the part before I built on it, I had 25 acres of developable area. And so I want to use that to get my density on my housing. But because we don't do that from a commercial standpoint, I then want to take that whole area and make it commercial. And it sort of is like getting two bites of the same apple. So we have not really leaned heavily into redevelopment as, as how we kind of have this regulation set up. And that was largely because there has been mixed feedback on the projects we've seen to date. And so we didn't want to kind of get into too, too far out into the deep end of the pool and, and start increasing some of those densities beyond what was in the regs. We sort of started with the baseline. So I don't know if this would be the best mechanism for redevelopment or if it would be separate, it's something we could look at.
Are we keeping density bonus?
Are we keeping density bonuses in the new regs?
No, no, they're gone completely.
We, some of the feedback we got during that session was that there was not a lot of love for the buying of the bonuses and how you could get to the bonuses and also buying your way out of the need to construct affordable housing. That was, there was a pretty good consensus among all that feedback.
So do you think the redevelopment should be a separate regulation?
I think that we, redevelopment can apply sort of, when we talk about this, we're talking about new sites and so it's easier to envision how those would get developed.
Right.
Redevelopment is a function of the location and the building. And are they going to use the building? Are they going to add to the building? And it's a little bit more complicated. So we haven't really contemplated it in the way this is written, which is not to say we couldn't. I just think.
But do you think it should be part of this or it should be a regulation by itself? If we want to have some flexibility for the mall itself, yeah.
Do you think you're going to have a lot of it or?
Maybe nothing will ever happen and.
Well, I think there's certainly areas we want to, we want to encourage redevelopment. And the Eastbrook Mall, I would say would be one of them. I would also say the Dollar General would be an area, the Dollar General Plaza at the Four Corners would be an area where we'd want to have redevelopment. So.
About the two schools. We have Fenton, we have Goodwin.
Right. Well, we're in the middle of a facilities master plan to kind of decide what the community feels is most appropriate for that. And then I think the logical next step would be, you know, once the community decides an appropriate use, then to look at the zoning and see if there is a zone change that's needed.
Since the current proposed moratorium is only till December, perhaps a question for the consultants is, is it a logical idea to attempt to figure out from scratch redevelopment of large existing industrial as a part of this in the next five months?
Yeah, I think our, our gut is to do it separately only because of the way that this has been set up.
Okay, we'll just put it on our to do list.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm going to need a new.
It never gets shorter.
Keep adding.
So the last category is SE, SE RHO, which is shown here in green. It's, it's just this little tiny, tiny dot. So you can have any development type there, but.
And that's basically a floating zone and that was designed so to be proximate to the Maple Road and South Eagleville Road. So. But that's a zone that has to be applied.
So the map on the right, which is not at all, not winning any awards for cartography because of the way that it was designed. But I put it all on one map and I realized it was impossible to really pick through. So I just want to show you again, keeping the, keeping the map on the left in mind and the tan being the other. The map on the right shows in red your wetlands. So anything in red is automatically going to, if someone's dealing with other, they're coming in with multiplexes with all those things and they are lucky enough to be on an arterial collector road and in a compact residential. And they have five acres. Anything shown in red is automatically going to come off of the eligibility for density, right? Wetlands are not developable. So.
On this map, I don't know, all the checkered red?
All the checkered red. Those are your wetland soils as of noon when your town engineer sent them. And then.
Probably haven't changed. Really hope they haven't changed.
In blue are all the parcels that are not five acres. So if it's red or blue, it's out. I, I can zoom in on these and, and show you, you know, you can see a little bit further. But in this obviously does not show development. It also doesn't show if there's been, you know, map amendments or things that have been flagged, but.
Or preserved open space.
Preserved open space.
Yeah, there's a lot of land that.
Yes, Joshua's Trust, et cetera, et cetera. But what I don't want is for the, the summary clip, right, and the newsreel to be when everybody leaves here, they think, oh, my gosh, so everything in other, this is, it's the whole town. I don't, I don't want there to be increased concern because so much of the town falls into other. Because when you take those category, those, those areas and you plug them into the map on the right, you're not, you're, you're, there's not a lot left, which is not to say there's nothing. I'm not trying to make you feel as though this can't happen anywhere. But I, but I want to show you in a.
But basically the, what we're saying is that even in those white spots all over the town, there's no apartments and no multiplex.
Uh, no apartments, but possibility of multiplex if they're on the arterial and collector road and they're on that land use map that's compact residential.
Which is a small, which is small.
Which has loaded.
Which is here.
Which is sort of loaded.
So compact residential is this other, this, this portion down here. In here. Right.
And then. There's also compact residential on Honey Lodge Road. And off of Birch Road where Clubhouse Apartments is. The parcel. I wish that would load.
It would be really useful, bless.
So again, you, you'd need to be.
The vast majority, the vast majority of the town is no apartments and no multiplex.
And that, that, you know, as we've said over and over, that future land use map is a policy map that can be changed when you update the P O C D. It could also be changed as a result of the Northwest Mansfield Vision and Strategy Plan.
There you go.
You may want to tweak that.
It loaded. So the, I'm not going to move it so that it doesn't go away, but that dark brown, red-ish, those are the areas that you could have a multiplex, but still.
No apartments.
And, yeah.
If it's not in dark brown, purple, red, or one of those striped brown and reds, it is, the future land use map recommends that it is supposed to be low density. Green is permanently protected for a variety of reasons. Brown is the rural residential agricultural forestry, which means the fundamental, most important character of that land is supposed to say rural and in residence or agriculture or forestry. That is the tan. So, so the yes, so the light green is permanent protection, conservation. The tan that surrounds it is the rural agroforestry region. The yellows are the rural village regions. Now those last two, those are, there are design guidelines in our future land use map section of the P O C D that speaks specifically to the types of housing that you want there, the types of development, the types of density. And for rural rezag forest and rural village, those are all supposed to be low density, incorporating traditional housing styles with specific ways that you try to drop it back away from the road. Keep as much forest as possible, as much natural resources as possible, hide everything, stay with traditional styles, stay walkable in the case of villages, but not very dense. So even.
What's not very dense?
That is a suggestion. This is a policy document as opposed to the zoning, which is like the administrative, how do you actually execute on it, legislative versus executive?
So I, I know in one of our reg review meetings, we had asked for pretty specific numbers of how many lots or how many pieces of property these regs would actually apply to. Could we get that? I know we had talked about it. Is that, I know Charlie Vidic went through and did hand by hand, but it sounds like so this does not necessarily apply to that.
Well, so I think we can do most of that, but the reason why you can't ever get that data from the, period. That, that a comprehensive list that is exact does, will never exist because we're using wetlands data based upon the state layer and the development would require wetlands to be flagged. Almost never do wetlands present to be less than what the state layer says. Typically, if you've got them on site, most of the times you find that they're to a greater extent. So nobody can present a plan that has all of the steep slopes, all of the wetlands as they exist in the field combined together to give you an accurate representation. You also don't have your, your easements and land use restrictions mapped by parcel. So.
Well, we can talk about that, but I think we could, you could, if you go back to your, your GIS analysis, we could, I mean, we'd be busy, right? But I think you could, through GIS, you could put the, the open space layer on top and then you could put the Yukon property on top. And then just do like an extraction, but there's, there's a.
One thing I can't.
I can't remember.
We might be able to add all the layers and have our GIS consultant who's.
Our guy.
Better, better than this than us. We wanted to come with something just to show you that, you know, there, there are not going to be over 200 parcels that this is going to apply to, which I think you can see by looking at just the two layers that we put on here. And so I think we can have him do a query that would give us at least a general idea once you add all of those layers on.
Because I think.
What it would be.
The concern is, you know, from, from the research that was done, pretty alarming ahead.
Why, here, it's a workshop. We can talk back.
I know.
Why does it alarm you that you have discretion to approve or deny things in different places?
My, my alarm was when I looked at Charlie Vidic's report of all of those, thinking.
You were supposed to be alarmed.
Yeah.
It was much like.
But it is alarming.
Much like the way statistics are.
But I think it requires a lot of trust in this commission and I don't think the town has a lot of trust in this commission at the moment. And so I think that we need to address that.
But I think we need to start with, is the 200 correct?
Right. And that's why I'd like that number.
Yeah.
A better, a more accurate number.
If it's 50 or 20, then it's not as alarming.
Exactly.
And so.
And additionally, how do you, how do you draw that number? If it's where can apartments go?
Right.
Apartments aren't going pretty much anywhere.
We need to, I think we need to be clearer about that.
In addition, if it's where would anything dense be appropriate?
I think it's fair, I think it's fair to have that, that extraction, that query done.
So to be clear, it, it's not going to be, this is not a binary analysis of apply or does not apply, right? So for example, whatever parcel that this is, I, I don't know. I'm not going to click on it.
That's a Yukon property.
But let's assume we're going to just do what we want with Yukon. The, the red is areas which come off the developable acreage calculation. So the, the red doesn't mean it's out, it can't be developed. The red means before they even come to you, they have to take all of this red out and then see what they have left. And then that's how they apply the density. So we're, we're not going to be able to tell you a list of parcels that are in or out only because I, there's probably very few parcels that meet the criteria that don't have something. The other piece that we probably can't truly analyze quickly, but I don't know, is we also pull out steep slopes. And so to be able to do some of that would be tough, but we can, we will, we will do our best to let the experts decide how they can take all the data and take the question you've asked and put together a map that will get you as close to that answer as possible.
Now, one thing we could do, if you want to bring the 200 down to practically zero, is we could take out this line right here, which has the duplex of 10 units per acre on arterial and collector roads. If we modify that, we're down to many fewer places.
Well, well, then you're down to the map on the left, right?
I'm not, I'm not sure I follow.
So you're saying, he's saying all the other.
Okay, so this one, this one, which is the single family duplex in the other.
Yeah, you're saying.
Which is the 10 units per acre.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I think a lot of Charlie Vidic's multiplication had to do with that 10.
Right, he used the 10 number.
Yeah, he used the 10 number.
So I guess fundamentally, the question for, for you all is, when we started this, writing this regulation and what we heard the feedback was, was that you guys wanted to be able to have density, didn't necessarily want apartments, wanted mixed type of housing. So those single family detached, maybe townhouses on these other areas in town. So you could certainly reduce that density, but it's going to lend you away from what it is that you guys have been saying you were sort of wanting as maybe a design for these other areas. Again, apartments can't go here. So if multiplexes isn't something you guys see in those areas, we can simply remove that. I think that's, you know, that's easy enough and.
Well, they're already, they're already removed, the multiplexes. We're talking about the duplexes now.
No, I, I know what you're saying, but what I'm saying, well, they're not removed. They're in here at eight units.
And the vast majority of the town, there's no multiplex or apartment. So, so we're down.
Majority of town, there is no apartment.
No apartment.
There are, right. If you are on an area of, if you, you can have a multiplex, the way you guys wanted this, you can have a multiplex, eight units per, for, for developable acre on an arterial collector but road, but it has to be.
On the compact.
In the compact.
So that reduces.
Right.
Practically nothing. Yeah.
Right, right. Yep.
So really the only discussion is where, where those duplexes go.
Duplex or multiplex?
Duplex.
He's, they're talking about.
There's no apartments, there's not, there's no multiplex to speak of because that's a very reduced amount of land. So really the discussion that Charlie Vidic was, his discussion is based on the duplex.
Do you ever think it's appropriate to put something like Freedom Green? Somewhere that is not currently in the dense noted for compact residential? Let's take the best case scenario because we can doom and gloom about the worst case scenarios to hell and back. The best case scenario, everybody likes Freedom. I've never met a single person in town. I've been in this town for now, a year and a half. I've worked here. Everyone loves Freedom Green. It's a neighborhood. It is a community. People of all ages live there.
It doesn't.
And we can't get that.
Unless you have, okay, so the question is.
We've talked about that. Do you remember?
I, I'd have to go back. It's, it's pretty dense, but yeah, I, I can, I did, I counted what they're.
So, so the question is, do we want, we, maybe we want one more Freedom Green or two, but Charlie's saying you're going to get 20 if you allow one. So, so we're sort of caught between wanting zero or.
So here's the thing to remember, the, the misconception about that is this regulation allows nothing. You guys ultimately decide where it is appropriate and how many of them you want. So if you have two of those types of developments come in and the third one comes in and you say, you know what? We're good. We have enough. You simply deny the zone change. That is specifically why we wrote the regulation this way.
And I think that's the fallacy of Charlie Vidic's argument is that we automatically will approve 20 of those.
And that's, you know, a number of people talked about needing a purpose statement. You know, what are we trying to accomplish with this? And I do think that might be helpful for the community. What are we?
We have that.
Is it in there?
There's a vision statement and a purpose statement. Yes.
Larry.
Well, Freedom Green is on water and sewer. That, that bottom part of town, that South Potter Town is on Willimantic Water and Sewer.
Right.
The only other water and sewer is up around stores.
Right.
Many Freedom Greens can there be?
Good point. Good point.
Paul had called me today and said, can we tie this to water and sewer, the density to water and sewer? And I, and we discussed this at regulatory review. And in essence, it's always tied to water and sewer capacity. If there's, you know, any developer has to come and they have to prove before your special permit that on the day of when they filed their special permit or right about there, that there was water and sewer availability. Now, we don't reserve that for them. So they're, they're taking a risk. And they don't get that reservation until they file their zoning permit. So, but in essence, density will be controlled by the availability of infrastructure.
So, but Larry, to your point, it is conceivably possible that someone could create a Freedom Green with their own sewer and water system. And I don't think we automatically want to prohibit that. But then again, we don't want 20 of them. And there's no reason why we have to approve any.
Well, I just have to say.
Where can someone create their own water and sewer? Are you talking about a, a very large capacity well and a very, very large capacity septic system?
Correct.
That's what White Oak Apartment.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say White Oak would be an example of that.
That's what Rolling Stone had.
Had that type of situation where we were all fed off of one well and. And we had individual holding tanks. Each place had a holding tank. Then we got public.
Right, yeah.
Rolling Hills off of Route 44.
So there are workarounds that we don't want to prohibit completely, but it makes it a lot more difficult.
So I just have to state
Yes, go ahead.
I I don't, the likelihood of there being many of these projects go through seems to be a little unlikely to me. So I think that talking about 20 all coming in, especially within a short time span, seems unlikely. I think that
And we wouldn't approve it.
Yeah, we wouldn't approve it. So it's it's a moot point anyway. So I'm just wondering if this is something that a lot of people, if Freedom Green is something that a lot of people like, and it's the one thing that we can agree on throughout all this, why are we trying to take an axe to people trying to make a reasonable number more of them?
No, I, yeah, I don't think we should. Yeah, I think we should allow another one. Everyone likes it. We should allow another one, yeah, or two, but maybe not 20 all at once.
I I just think that's a little, I mean, I I don't know if you can do a probability on this, but the probability of 20 is near zero.
Yes.
So
That's Charlie Vidic's argument is that if we approve these regulations, 20 will come and we can't do anything about it and we'll have 30,000 people here. And I I that's not a realistic
Yeah.
criticism.
Well, then why are we spending
Why are we spending so much time on it? Yes, because people get afraid.
People uncomfortable.
People are uncomfortable by that.
And I think we owe the community a reasoned response to that.
I think it's important that they understand.
Yes.
So if 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 it wasn't understood through the, you know, the presentation at the first public hearing and the follow up, then I I think this workshop getting presented as part of your next public hearing and people understanding that inherently that can't happen. And so, you know, that is a concern, especially if you don't understand how the regulation as a whole is working. And when you look at the properties and that, you know, again, I think we can obviously narrow it down where it's not going to be a like
It's not going to be perfect.
It's not going to be perfect, but I think it will give a better picture for you guys and for the public. And and again, I think part of it was I was hearing high density, like apartment type style in these other areas, and that's just not something that's allowed by this regulation.
I don't think people were clear what multiplex is.
That could be as well. Yeah.
Or what or what or what duplex is.
Or where the compact residential area is.
The other thing that I want to touch on is we've spent a lot of time talking about density and the number of units. Alls we've done is establish a ceiling, eight units per acre, not a requirement. So that we're not saying you have to build eight units. We're saying you don't even come in and ask us to build more than eight. You have the ability to say, we like the project. It's too big. Can we just cut it in half? We want to cut your units in half. We wanted to cut your density down. You cannot approve something beyond those. But but you can absolutely reduce it. So the these densities that we're talking about, they're not assumed, they're not required. You can adjust any of those down. You can say you've come in with a multiplex, you know, can we do duplexes up front or single families up front? And and give you a couple of multiplexes in the back. So your density, the number of units you get is the same, right? Because developers, it's all about math. If they can't get the densities they need to make the project work, it won't happen. But if you, you know, if you want to graduate the project a little bit and do stuff up front that people can see as one type and do something that's different elsewhere, you can do that, too.
And we can also say single family and not duplex on a site and and five units per acre of single family only.
And if and so if he's, he or she says, yep, that sounds good. We'll do that, that you approve a master plan. Number one, if they don't come back in a year, it expires. So if they say, oh, we're going to come in and get this because we want to grab on to your your sewer capacity and we're going to just bank it, well, they can't because they've got to come back to you and design the project in compliance with the master plan or the master plan expires. And number two, if they say, yep, we're going to do that. And let's say it's 2019 and all of a sudden COVID hits and the real estate market goes nuts. And they come back two years later with the hub. That doesn't fly either. They're back to square one because they haven't come in with compliance with their master plan. So at every step of the way, you have to either check their work, you have control over their work. And it it was intentional based upon all the feedback. And we sat here and and this commission said that they wanted to set some of the criteria up this way because you didn't want to stop projects from being able to come in to see you. You wanted to have that flexibility and discretion when it came before you. So rather than writing all this criteria and having all this stuff never come in or or come in and and yeah, yeah, I'm just going to push you out.
Take me out of here.
We we left it open so that it could come in and and go before you through the public hearing process, through the the design review process and really hopefully be reflective of what everybody wants. So with that, I'm done. I have to, I have to run. The, when is the next, when's the next?
August 5.
The the next, the public hearing has been continued to August 5.
So
And we had said a tentative meeting on August 15 for another workshop.
So I'm not 100% certain if we're going to be able to get the GIS analysis done in time for the 5th. I'll try, but he's out next week.
Okay, yep.
This is, it's the GIS version of the National Planning Conference, which is happening, so.
He has to attend.
Yeah, so
We want him to attend.
But
But I think I think it's important that people understand that just because there are X number of spots that could be developed, doesn't mean that we're going to approve them all simultaneously.
Or that anyone will want to.
Or that anyone will even want to.
Or also that just because it can be developed, doesn't mean it could be developed into like a multiplex or, yeah.
But I think we need to be clear.
We need to be, we need to do a better job of communications.
One thing from the Conservation Commission, when I presented the PHDD to the Conservation Commission, one of the things that they noted was from an ecological standpoint, they're very concerned about seeing the long term effects of stormwater on these areas that are being developed. And that there was a worry of how do we modulate development in an area such that we can actually see the impacts? And we've heard echoes of this from other people speaking about what are the actual impacts of development on my life and my patterns of life on a day to day basis? Because this is a very restrictive thing, it requires your permission. This gives you the ability to say, we have two big developments come into the last three years. We're still figuring out what's happened to the watershed here. We're still figuring out what's happened to the traffic here. Oh, you can come back in a few years. We're not going to prove the zone change now. From a wetlands permitting perspective, just to just to speak with your inland wetlands agent hat, a lot of times when a project comes to inland wetlands, that is the phase where you try, what when it comes to permitting, people try to find things wrong with a project at wetlands, even the littlest thing, if they don't like it for a reason that isn't related to wetlands. Because wetlands allows you to stop a project from happening with a lot more discretion than the special permit process traditionally. But in a way, that's not really how the wetlands process is supposed to be used. By having it this way, where you're looking for, let's go back to another project, the golf course. There was a lot of discussion at the very end of the process. We don't really like the big apartment building on the corner. Right? That people didn't really like it, but it didn't feel like there was enough wrong with it to kill the project because of that, even if it would have been nice to just reshuffle the site and get a couple of those bigger mansion style buildings there. That would have been great. That keeps the colonial style by the street. This lets you do that. You don't have to feel guilty about it. It's the purpose of it. You're not looking to shoot it in the foot at wetlands for a reason why it shouldn't be shot in the foot. Real discretion, real transparency, because you are saying, we don't like this for X reason. And if the developer says they can't make it work, that's fine. They don't have to make it work. You don't have to allow it.
We we also have included in here that if a project does come in, that's 100 units or more, you have the right to ask for fiscal impact analysis. So you can get them to dig in a little bit more on what the project might look like if it's a substantial size and you're concerned about, I don't know, school age children, although we have declining enrollment and we're not seeing that, so I I think that's sort of passed. But if you have those concerns because the project is larger and you're trying to understand water, sewer, whatever it is, 100 plus units, this regulation allows you to ask for that analysis to be prepared by the applicant. So you can have some data to make that decision. And
I think we have declining enrollment in part because we don't have houses for young families.
I think that's a good point.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question about is any of the compact residential land in Four Corners area?
Yeah, can we?
No, but if you, hold on, I would need the keyboard, but I can get it up on the screen.
There is, it's not in Four Corners. It's along Honey Lodge Road. It's the Clubhouse Apartments. If you're familiar with that, like if you go, that's on Birch Road and then the part, any anything below Carriage House Drive is compact residential as well. And then you have a compact residential transition. No, not not right now. They're going to have to get public water if they want to do it.
How is that, is how much of that is wetlands?
Well
Or how is that? So here's my question.
There's a burnout pool in the middle of
One of the things that keeps coming up is protecting the Cedar Swamp watershed.
Yep.
And I would really like to have a a more robust conversation about that.
Yep.
Because I think it it comes up with every development. We do this, do it on a piecemeal thing. And I think we need to think, maybe create a better plan for that area that's specific to it.
Yep.
So one of the things that Jennifer and I were doing as part of the Northwest Mansfield Plan was we spoke with FHI, who's the consultant for that, concerning how do we specifically protect these areas that are sensitive aquifers, right? We have aqua protection areas insofar as they are actual realized aquifers that we use for things like drinking water. But when it just comes to superficial aquifers, places where water is under the ground and it penetrates easily, how do we protect those? I've been exploring a little bit of potential zoning reg that will kind of go as an addition onto our performance standards that will kind of be a bit more restrictive on what has to be provided on areas that have ground, essentially that's coarse grain where water can very easily get into it, where pollution, if it exists, is more likely to have impact on your groundwater. And the Cedar Swamp Brook is one of the largest areas of those coarse grains for this kind of
Other areas like that in town?
There are a few, but they mostly exist along our major rivers.
But they're protected anyway.
Yeah, a lot of this has multiple layers of existing protection already. But, you know, as you can see, the Cedar Swamp Brook does exist in, under our future land use map, one of those areas that does have the densest predicted development. These are mixed use center, mixed use center transitional, compact residential, compact residential transitional. So all this stuff is denser.
And I I think we need to rethink some of that.
This is the dinosaur shaped lot that we, that the proposed zone change came in on I guess, two years ago now, in 20, late 2022. But that was denied.
Early 23.
And you could still deny that under the same reasons you denied it. Now, this is the Cedar Swamp.
So I I think that that's good, but we can, so we have to, when we're enacting these particular regulations, we need to make sure that we're protecting our environmental resources. But I think there are provisions to to do that with this regulation because what it would allow you to do is you could require, you could say this is an area of a sensitive watershed. We won't, we strongly encourage you to to do a study of that. You know, that would be parcel by parcel, but we we already know that this area is sensitive, so they're going to have to address that. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that, Robin, and how we might use this reg to protect that watershed?
That is sort of by design. You guys can ask for any information that you need to for those environmental concerns. There's, we've, it's written in here. I mean, you can do that at wetlands, too, just to be clear. So, you know, this, this does not bypass wetlands. But this regulation, you can have a higher degree or level of looking at those sensitive areas to the point where you could just say, you know, we just don't think it's appropriate, right? It gives you way more power. Again, the 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 reason that we designed it the way we did was so that you guys have the ability to comfortably say no without having to worry about being appealed. And that application process of a zone change master plan gives you that ability. And yes, you can cite reasons. Zone change don't require you to cite reasons why. You can just say it's not appropriate and you deny it. With that said, I just want to jump to a couple of things. Under additional requirements, fiscal impact analysis Mike talked about, but also, you know, this is being layered on top of your existing zoning districts that you have. And we did build in this other additional requirements that says the specific development standards, design restrictions, or other criteria contained within the underlying districts can also be applied. And the reason why we did that is specifically the PVRA has some very specific environmental protections built into that zoning district. And we didn't, we wanted to make sure they didn't get lost as part of this landing this zone. So
Things like setbacks,
In the PVRA specific
Well, I mean, in in other, what are, just generally, what are those?
Well, I'll speak to the PVR. The PVRA is a specific zone where you want to protect your agricultural soils. But other zones might be maybe you could talk about what's, what we could do for the, in the RAR 90, for example, or the, like, what specific restrictions would?
Well, here's the thing, you you don't have to be bound by the underlying zone. We added this additional requirement so that if there is something that's a standard in the underlying zoning district, you guys have the ability to say, we would like this standard to be pulled over into your plan. Because we didn't want to lose some of those, you know, your your residential zoning districts don't necessarily have a lot of just like standards, right? Because someone comes in with a traditional subdivision, you get a single family home. There's not a lot of design and criteria that goes into those. It's not like a high density housing regulation. But PVRA in particular had some very specific protections for that zoning district, and we didn't want that to go away or have to pull it over into this regulation. So those underlying standards or protections that you have in some of the other zoning districts would still be applicable under this regulation.
Can I go back to one thing that Sarah brought up about getting specific studies done? You know, that we could fall back on a study if we felt that there was going to be a big impact that we would require the person to do an impact study. I'd like to see the wording say that it has to be an independent person that both we agree on and the client agrees on only because we are running into with some of our developers, we ask for a traffic study. They do a traffic study at 1:00 in the in the morning and when the kids are not around. They don't do it towards the busy time.
I would have to say that 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 that's not necessarily the case because when there have, you have you have the Planning and Zoning Commission. Every three years, you qualify your experts. The last time you qualified your experts was 2022. So you're, this year, you'll be ready to do a new round. However, so you've hired professional engineers that have a background in traffic to tell, when the, when there was something questionable about the developer's traffic study, those experts called that out. And in some cases, they had to go back and do different counts or figure out something else. So I would say that may you are already doing that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the wording was in there.
Well, that, so that stays that you have the authority to use our the our ordinance, that's a town ordinance, that to hire your own consultant and that the cost of that consultant is borne by the developer. But as you saw in these, in this busy year you've had, they report to you.
Okay, I just, I just want to get us covered in a sense to placate the fears of the residents out there. Because sometimes I know that's the one thing that I got on the developments on 44 was that the times that they took the traffic studies were crazy when the kids were on vacation or something like that. And so they they didn't feel that there was a good traffic study done.
And if you look, if you look back at that, I'm not sure that, I know there was a lot of concern about that, but I'm not sure that was really backed up by the traffic study that was done. Go read the traffic study itself.
I just want I just want, but one of the questions, one of the things I got was, okay, who hired firm to do the traffic study?
We do and they do.
The developer.
But we then hired, yeah, the developer absolutely hired their own, because we're not paying for traffic studies for developments. But we hi, you hired a consultant to review.
So it automatically does go.
Well, whenever we receive that application, you authorize, you, we go out for an RFP because to your, I think you have five qualified consultants that can do a traffic, can do a review of a traffic study. We do an RFP to that qualified list. And then you, you're the ones who choose that consultant.
Okay. But when the developer does the study, whether it's for the wetlands or whether it's for traffic or whatever, does it automatically go to one of our consultants?
Well, in, for the past five developments, it, you, that was a requirement. So for the larger developments, staff has strongly encouraged the commission to hire your own expert. And that's why we developed the list of consultants that are qualified. Because it's very hard if you have to do an R, a new RFP every time. It's really hard to find people and you want to make sure they're qualified. So you all went and you spent like a day of your life interviewing these consultants.
Yeah. And I, I was on one of those committees.
Yeah. Yeah. So you, you, you vetted them. Yeah. So.
But I just, if it's an automatic thing, then that satisfies me.
Yeah, it is.
So I think to sort of wrap up for your next meeting, we'll see if our GIS consultant can get like a, a narrow down of the parcels, but that may end up being for the meeting after, or if we have another workshop for that next workshop. But we will go through the design review comments that came in and, and make some changes to that. I will add them into the process because I, I think that that is, would be a good addition. And the other thing that I did talk to Jennifer about earlier today, and she can run it by your town attorney, but I did run it by one of our town attorneys that we use is that that conceptual informal presentation can be mandated in the regulation. So right now, the way we wrote it, it's optional, but strongly encouraged. We're actually going to change that to mandatory.
And, and thank you for clarifying that because I believe I thought that we were not required, or I know I thought we weren't required to. I always said in my presentation that if a developer comes to planning staff and they say, well, should I do this or not? I'm going to say, well, this is discretionary, so I strongly recommend it. But if we can require it, I think that is really important.
So it has to be specified in the regulations. That was the caveat for it. So we would be specifying it.
My, my last question of the day. One of the things that's come up a lot or multiple times was a needs assessment for housing. And I know there were surveys done, there was a lot of, they were looking at things when we looked at the affordable housing. But I wonder if some of that could, would apply to this because there was that count? Because we looked at a lot of kind of what warehousing was missing, what groups needed housing.
So you have your, you have your affordable housing plan. You have, on September 30th, I'm working with a consultant. I hope we can meet this deadline because we're a little behind schedule. There will be a public presentation regarding the Northwest Mansfield Vision and Strategy Plan and an opportunity for people to weigh in and provide comments on that. So that's going to kind of talk about kind of the, some of the goals and objectives. A housing needs assessment, I mean.
Asking because it came up with a number of people.
Robin has some ideas of how we could do that. We, we have anecdotal, we certainly have anecdotal knowledge that a lot of people, for example,
Young families.
Young families, you know, first starting professors. Michael Stankoff, who is a.
I didn't, I didn't buy a house in this community because I.
Buy a house here, could not buy one.
Find anything available on the market that wasn't overly expensive or required a bunch of updates that I couldn't do because I'm not a carpenter.
Right. So, I mean, to get more data.
But I guess there was some, remember this, the work we did early on with the Affordable Housing Committee? There were some town surveys that were looking at what groups of people felt their housing needs weren't being met.
Yep.
And, and that feels like it is applicable to this, doesn't it?
I, I mean, I think that's part of the impact analysis, the.
Sorry to interrupt. This seemed, A, I think that's what our job is, is elected officials is to figure, is to be educated enough to know who in the community needs housing and to come in with a perspective on that. I also question really how one, how we could have a system for like who needs housing? Because we've, in many kind of conversations past, we've talked about how it's difficult and how there's been a lot of arguments as to whether certain groups like students need housing or whether, you know, how you can really measure what families, like what the need exactly is for housing. So I, if, at a certain point, we do need to use our discretion here. And I think you're right that, we're right that maybe the impact is good enough. And I'd also be wary of tacking on too many studies and, and impacts and categories.
Thinking, maybe I'd like a more robust vision statement or purpose statement that, that looks, that talks about the need for middle housing, which we define in some way. Need for housing for young families, housing for seniors.
We need housing, period.
We do, but I think there are particular groups that have had a very difficult time finding housing in this community. So I, I would like to add that in.
Okay.
And I think that's anecdotal, and I think it's also based on some of the surveys that we did in the past.
Yeah. I mean, I'll put a different hat on. So I'm a residential real estate agent. And I can tell you that Mansfield is a very difficult community for people who want to move here to find affordable, affordable, and I don't mean affordable 832 affordable. I mean, you know, not 400,000 and needing extensive amounts of work. So there's not a lot on the market in, in Mansfield and what is here is, you know, out of reach for most first time homeowners.
What makes us think that's going to get any better than marketing? It's not.
I think if we build, if we can build more things that are.
You can't build it for cheap enough is the problem. We had a discussion, the chair had a discussion one time. We're talking about, you'd have to build triplexes, I think, instead of duplexes to make economic sense.
That's not entirely true because part of the reason housing is so high is because demand is so high because of student housing. If, if they were.
Your mic, yeah.
I think if there were, we've talked about this a lot of times. If there were fewer students in houses in neighborhoods that are often, those are, those are not big expensive houses. Then that would make more housing available for young families and perhaps bring the price down.
One, one good thing is that the university in three weeks is going to open a 650 bed dormitory.
One bad thing is that there's, the waiting list is a few hundred people right now for housing. So, I mean, you've, we've seen complaints that, oh, like stu, I think it was Carriage House, someone mentioned. Students were still signing leases in, you know, October and September when the semester already began. That's because the waiting list is so large and I don't think we can. In fact, I know for, I know for a fact, we cannot trust UConn to build enough housing commensurate to this admitted student.
Need to encourage them.
I think it's true.
Well, especially when, I mean, UConn, at least from what I understand, UConn's admissions very, very heavily based on what teams win what in what years. And because we've been on a good, you know, tear basketball wise for the past few years, it means that we've had an unprecedented number of students, which means that, I don't know, you can't really predict. The argument is, is that you can't predict that. And I also think that a focus, I mean, if our plan is designed to reduce apartment buildings, we're through a vast majority of the town and to decrease their density. What you're going to have is you're going to have a lot more students living in those single family homes. Or you'll have students, like I know some students who just live on, live illegally and, you know, they're not on the lease, which is, I don't think anyone wants that to be an outcome either.
Greg does make a good point though. I do want to point out that this was something we heard at the public hearing. It is very hard to build new affordable housing in a way that works economically because of the costs of new construction, which is where taking existing buildings and up converting them, taking an existing single family, adding a partition wall, doing some update work, turning it into a three family, which is the regulation set that's going to come after this that we talked about, I think, once or twice at Reg Review, which is where that comes in because that creates that natural, naturally occurring stuff that you see that works so effectively to house East Con students in Willimantic, right? A lot of those existing old houses have been split into two or three family, or fi, or five or six apartments, right? And those work and the rents become reasonable once you hit a certain density of them. But as for, this is, this is a part of how you get there, you know? Is a big deficit. I think it is Connecticut that actually has the worst housing deficit in the nation when that survey came out a couple of years.
Like in the top five.
Yeah. It's not good. We just need, we need a lot more houses. It's got to start somewhere.
We're also top five for expensive real estate market. So.
Yeah.
I see Larry's got a raise.
There's someone who knows about real estate.
Well, somewhat. To, to go along with Mike's comment, Eagleville Green is highly, highly dependent on grant money, which is one of the reasons why it's going to be as affordable as it is. It's not a developer coming in and building from scratch and having to pay what market rates are for site work, lumber, roofing, the whole ball of wax. And I think developers are, are taking a huge financial risk. And I'm, I'm not here defending greed, but that's what they do. They try and maximize their, their profits. And I don't know if we're ever going to be able to to zone or make any, any changes that are going to penalize people who are trying to make their money.
Really need an income based solution.
We need more businesses.
Well, we need, we need, we need a living wage for people.
Make sure, what you're saying is important. So make sure your mic's around, please.
There's also the fact, consider that UConn essentially runs very large public housing project in the middle of stores. And they choose to increase, and they run for the most part, the lowest cost units. So if they choose to increase the price, they can, you know, increase the price by 20%. Should they, like they have for the past previous five years, if they want to say pay for a 20% budget cut over five years, which is what will likely happen.
Well, I don't think we're going to be able to solve all of those problems.
One thing that could be good, I think, is just since there's, I think this was supposed to go seven, so there's like 15 minutes on the clock. Was, it could go as late as you wanted to, but at seven thirty, the seven thirty of the stream is focused on us. Is just, i- if anybody has lingering misunderstandings or stuff that they, you know, stuff that they're like, I still don't quite understand how this works. They're like, here's how I feel about it. I think this is the perfect place to just talk about, how do we feel about this reg? What are our apprehensions? What might we not understand how it works? Because that's the best way for the public who may have the exact same thoughts to understand what all that is.
I have a question. If we're removing fee and lieu, where does the money come from to renovate old buildings?
Right.
So that's a good point, and that's something that we've talked about. So the first, I guess, one of the things is that there is money out there to do that renovation. With the town just submitted a $2 million CDBG small cities grant to renovate Wright's Village, to give them a new roof, new windows, new doors, new landscaping, new walkways. So there is money available to do that. And you have 5 million, almost, if, if the hub files their zoning permit, you'll have up to about $5 million in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which will not, 5 million on its own will not get you very many units built. However, that 5 million can be leveraged with other state and federal dollars right now. And it doesn't mean, you know, if, if there were a developer who came in with a, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, but I've thought about this fee and lieu a lot because I staffed the Affordable Housing Committee. If a developer were to come in and say, I cannot make, I cannot build affordable units on site. You know, there's a method for them to come in for a text amendment and come up with a suitable fee and lieu that makes sense. Right now, our fee and lieu, you know, what I've heard from the commission, what I've heard from the Affordable Housing Committee is that it's really low. And while $3 million that the hub is giving us seems like a, a good chunk of change, it's really not. So building housing is complicated. And when you have the developer building it on site, that's probably the best way to go. And then we do have access to other funds. I would also say that building affordable housing shouldn't come on the backs of building multifamily housing either. I think it shouldn't, the only source of funding shouldn't be through the zoning process. Because ultimately that's going to result in increased rents for the people who are living in these multifamily. So it, it's complicated, right? But I do think there's a method to, if someone really wanted to use the fan lieu, they could come and make an argument and they could come in for a text amendment.
They can also provide low income properties at a different location.
They absolutely could. They could absolutely come in and buy one of our aging apartment complexes and de-restrict some of them, renovate them. And that could be part of the story that they're telling you to convince you that this is a good development.
Thank you.
At some point, I'd like, we need to have a conversation about affordable housing with these smaller projects. And I don't know where that fits, but.
Definitely. That could be part of your, I mean, right now, anything over five units is required to meet the affordable housing requirements, meaning that they have to have 15% of their units affordable or they would have to do something offsite, like what we were just talking about. They'd have to deed restrict. That would be a, a fraction. So most likely we would direct them to, to, yeah, that we would direct them maybe to buy a deed restriction somewhere.
Okay. Any other li, last minute things that you guys want us to look at before your next meeting? So I have my list here. We'll take a look at that vision statement and add to it. The design review comments and make those changes, add those couple of tweaks into the process. Our comments and sort of feedback tonight, we will give to Jennifer so that we'll be able to be posted so that anyone who doesn't want to sit through two hours of listening to us will have those bulleted notes that they could go through, members of the public. But was there anything else that has come up over the last two meetings that you guys want us to take another look at or that you're uncomfortable with, that you want us to reconsider as part of that?
I do have, I guess I was curious, other towns that have these floating districts. Are there others similar to ours that we could look at just to see how they've done it?
So I, I just want to clarify, this is not a traditional floating zone, like what was being said. This is a design district.
Okay.
And yes, other municipalities do have design districts. We could certainly, we, we wrote this from scratch for you guys based on, you know, the feedback from January in here. We could certainly look around and see what there is if, if you're interested in, in seeing those.
Again, I was curious because that came up in, in one of the things that was given to us.
Yeah, this is not, so a floating zone is a little different. A floating zone doesn't include master plan process. A floating zone means someone lands the zone and then they come back later and whatever the processes that you came up with, whether it's site plan or special permit, would be under there with their specified standards. So it is.
This is quite different.
This is different.
We've already got a design district in town. It's store center.
Yeah.
Which required an enormous amount of planning based on the huge files that are still in the planning office.
Yeah. So you, you guys have familiarity with, with that. And I also think the MCT zone works pretty similarly to this. You had a, a zone change and a master plan as part of that process.
And the thing with the mixed use center transitional zone is the master plan was not nearly as robust as this. So that, that's where I think that failed and that's why that zone never got landed. You also have another, the DMR, the Design Multiple Residences, a floating zone. And I have to look back, but I think we could also consider the South Eagle Road Housing Opportunity Zone also. Eagle Road Housing Opportunity Zone also as a, and that, you would have, you have to have 30% of your units affordable in order to apply that, because that, that zone came in under essentially 830G.
Anything else for today? If not, we still have an hour left on the concert at Patterson Square. There's a concert going on.
Over to the Dairy Bar, get something to eat.
So shall we say that this meeting is adjourned at 6:53?
We should say that. The weekend begins. Yeah.
Perfect. Larry, good to see you.
Bye-bye.